Alderman Percy.
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Here.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Kerwin.
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Here.
Alderman Studer.
Here.
Seven yes, seven present, three of four. Thank you. The regular meeting in Wilmington City Council on December 2nd, 2014 is now set. The council has approved the minutes for November 18th.
Mr. Mayor, I've reviewed the minutes and found no errors. I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented in the input.
Motion by Alderman Studer, they have second. Second by Alderman.
Is that Larry Hall?
Kirby Hall.
Kirby Hall, thank you.
Question, roll call vote please.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're going to change up the agenda just a little bit because we've got a small little crowd here. We've had an exciting week for football and exciting month for football, right? I see some excited kids back there. It's been a thrill for everything that's gone on with not only the Wildcats the past weekend, but especially the Bobcats who are here tonight who were here to recognize. We have two groups here tonight. We have our cheerleaders here that took first place in their competition. We also have the Super Light Bobcats. Exciting for you guys because you guys know when you guys go and play in these Super Bowl championships, not only represent yourselves, but you represent the entire city of Wilmington. It's a thrill when you guys go out there and not only play with great sportsmanship, but you come back and you bring home the trophies. So what I'd like to do tonight, and I'm going to come around here. First off, we're going to start with the cheerleaders and I'm going to call the coaches up and we'll go from there, okay? Thank you. One second. All right, if I could call the coaches for the cheerleaders Denise Cahill and Hannah Maynard.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You guys should stay up here with me while we take the girls off, all right? In case I don't do any of this. All right, Jamie Cahill. Grace Jones.
Congratulations.
Julie Keating. Kylie Knowles. They are right now. They are right now. Jada Lactara.
Harris Julia Mecht.
There you go. Erica Maynard. And Cameron Lewis. All right, congratulations to our 2014 Super Bowl champions. All right, next we have our 2014 Ivy Super Light Super Bowl champions. Do we have like four teams go to the Super Bowl for Bobcats?
Three out of the four.
Three out of the four, which is highly unprecedented, which was awesome. Even though the others two didn't come out winners, it's still just amazing to see that that many teams actually made it to the Super Bowl. All right, first we're going to start with our coaches. We're going to start with head coach Jason Diggs.
Good stuff, man. Joe Van Dyne. Brandon Staholz. Paul Cortez.
Ball working? All right, we're taking the money, let's go. Andy Walsh. Jeff Olgood. You know, it takes a lot of work to keep young ones in line. Maybe they're keeping you guys in line, I don't know. All right, now onto the important guys, right? Players. All right, Logan Aderman.
Still we all good?
Ryan O'Wingoff. Joseph Cortez. Logan Crawford. Colin James. John James. Ryan Kepplin. Ryan Cressel. Cade McCovin. Tristan Miller. Brendan Moran. Ryan Nelson. Ken and Orr. Pede Rambo. Justin Leifmeyer. Brandon Staholz. Nathan Sundine. Joey Van Dyne. Drew Walsh. Congratulations. All right, Taylor Yakima. Okay, one other one I didn't call out. Joe Mathiely, Pete Rambo, come on up. Oh, no handshake, come on. All right, 2014 Ivy, 2014 Ivy Super Light Super Bowl champions. All right, we're going to take a brief recess so everybody, you guys can kind of turn around if you are more about making stuff. All right, just going to go ahead and continue with the meeting and move up to the public hearing portion. Need a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to open the public hearing at 7:17 PM for discussion on a proposed property tax levy increase for 2014.
Motion by Alderman Kerwin, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Van Dyne. Roll call vote please. Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes. Thank you. Tonight we just have the public hearing in regards to the proposed tax. Our public hearing in regards to our property tax levy for the year of 2014. It's an annual thing that we do, most governments do. What we'd like to do is I'm going to turn it over to Kim real quick to give us a synopsis on the proposed tax levy and we'll open up to the public if they have any questions in regards to that.
Okay, what we're proposing this year is an eight percent increase over last year's extension in the general corporate fund. Combining that with the bond and interest fund, it's a 7.3% increase overall over last year's extended levy. Basically, the things before you is the different areas that we're levying taxes for. And there again, you know, the CPI this year is 1.5% and the EAV this year has decreased some. And we are levying the maximum in order to redeem all of the tax dollars that we can that are eligible to get.
Pretty much as I'm showing. Are there any questions in regards to the tax levy, anything? I think the way, if we were to give the entire eight percent, which probably wouldn't be good rebound by what they call a tax cap, which is limited to five percent. We're looking at, I think, a $10 increase on a freight pound of $150,000. So if you're looking at $10 a year, it's not just $10 a month, $10 for the entire year for the levy increase as far as it relates to property taxes in regards to the city. But we don't capture that money and then what happens? We end up leaving that money stayed with the county, we never get it back again. And it's always good to get the tax dollars that are due to city, to come to the city so we can, you know, pay the necessary bills that we have to. I think that a lot of that with pensions and everything else is back pretty much all at zero mark for specific line items.
Yeah, the main increase is to the police pension fund, which is a $400,000 cost. Last year, late police pension was right around 325?
Remember right?
Yep.
About the $80,000 is through revenue, most of it's going to our police pension.
Any questions for the public? All right, can I take the motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing at 7:21 PM.
Motion by Alderman Kerwin, do you have a second? Second by Alderman Evans. Roll call vote please. Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
Yes.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent, motion passes. All right, thank you. Marriage report, I already took your item number one. Item number two, just make the announcement again, ensure that I'm taking nominations for the 2014 Volunteer of the Year Award. We'll be taking those probably till the end of the year. At the beginning of the year, I make that announcement on for 2014 Volunteer of the Year. Second thing, block convention will be agreed now. National Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month for December 2014. Whereas motor vehicles crashes kill 991 people in Illinois during 2013. Whereas hundreds of those deaths involve the driver impaired by alcohol and/or drugs. And whereas the December holiday season is traditionally one of the most deadly times of the year for impaired driving. And whereas for thousands of families across the state and the nation, holidays are a time to remember loved ones lost. And whereas organizations across the state and the nation are joined with the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over and other campaigns that foster public awareness of the dangers of impaired driving and impaired driving law enforcement efforts. And whereas the city of Wilmington is proud to partner with the Illinois Department of Transportation's Division of Traffic Safety and other traffic safety groups in that effort to make our roads and streets safer. Now therefore, I, Mayor Marty Org, hereby proclaim December 2014 as Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month in the city of Wilmington and to hereby call upon all citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals and healthcare providers, schools and public and private institutions to promote awareness of the impaired driving problem, to support programs and policies to reduce the incidence of impaired driving and to promote safer and healthier behaviors regarding the use of alcohol and other drugs this December holiday season and throughout the year. All right, next item on the agenda under marriage report is the resolution in regards to payment for the Island Park District.
Mr. Mayor, I have that. I move to approve resolution number 2014-11-8. Resolution authorizing city payment to the Island Park District for certain snow removal.
Most valid, Alderman Larry Hall, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin. Tony, can you kind of care to explain this, give us a brief synopsis? I know this is kind of the current agreement we have, but they're asking for those more.
Yeah, the purpose was asking for more of a formal action. You know, our government agreement right now allows for additional work as agreed upon between the public works superintendent and the facility person. But the request was from the director was to more formalized so that it's in writing that we're asking them upon when Gary will ask to do the bridge for snow plowing up there and the snow removal. They wanted to have something more documented. So we decided to just do a resolution to amend the agreement just to explain that. So we'll only pay them upon a request to go out and do snow removal up on the bridge and sidewalks up there. They'll be bringing this to their board maybe on the 18th.
I had a conversation with the park district president Randy Hill in regards to this. He called me about this. Anticipate no more than two hours at a time to take for them to plow the sidewalks on the bridges. And basically the direction will come from our public works superintendent Gary Van Dyne when it's necessary for them to do it. So basically Gary's, when Gary makes that call, Gary is not just going to be purely discretionary when they feel it needs to be done. Gary needs to, will have that overriding authority for that right authority to tell all those things he can do.
Is there anything we can do about those before we hear them, they go in and clean the sidewalks up? Or you know, like on a grid at higher elevation where like trees up?
We could see look into that. A lot of times I know when I'm talking to Gary, what they try to do when, when they do have them go plow, is they try to wait till after all the plowing's been done on the roadways. What's happening fast, they go plow. IDOT still doing their plowing, IDOT brings the snow back over. So we want to catch it to where, you know, the snow basically done. IDOT's made the passes through town on 53 before they go out there and do those sidewalks. That way they're not basically kind of wasting time doing double the work. So yeah, we'll see how, you know, how it kind of plays out with the disalters and stuff like that. You know, Gary's our guy, Gary's, you know, handling this stuff day to day. I kind of love him to make the calls. Without this resolution, will, will the park district plow for us or no?
At this point, they said because of their insurance requirements, they would like us to have a resolution.
It's still in the agreement right now and others, you know, but I guess they were looking for a specific line to deal with the plowing. Even though, even when this agreement was created, it was still, and other than what, basically the discussion was about, you know, plowing the sidewalks and stuff like that, stuff outside it was, outside the normal maintenance of the parks. They just want that clarification. I can't, can't explain it differently, I guess. They just wanted clarification, they wanted to have a specific line item. Any further discussion? Roll call vote please. Alderman Larry Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin.
Yes.
Alderman Percy.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne.
No.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Studer.
Yes.
There are six yes, one no, one absent, motion passes. All right, next item is citizens comments. Do we have any citizens comments tonight? See a couple of Boy Scouts here looking for American citizens, right?
Yeah.
Nothing wrong with that, hopefully provide you a lot of excitement. Okay Kyle, make sure you take calls.
Thanks.
All right, citizens comments. All right, moving on, planning and zoning. Let's see, we got the preliminary site plan, so anyone make a motion on that?
I move to approve the preliminary site plan for the 10 acre side at the southwest corner of Design and Kavanaugh Roads as presented by Roach Logistics Park 1 LLC. Along with permission to move forward with masquerading at the site as recommended by planning and zoning commission.
Motion by Alderman Percy, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kirby Hall. All right, before we get into discussion, we do have Jennifer here tonight. Remember Project Turnkey, if you have any questions and you can kind of go over everything to Jennifer to highlight everything. Probably you have to go through the final.
Sure, yeah, no, I can just give you an overview. We're requesting preliminary site plan approval for about 10 acre site. It is south of Design Road, just south of the Transhold facility that's currently out there now. It'll be for 114,000 square foot freezer facility. And we've submitted our preliminary engineering, that's been reviewed. And we expect to have final engineering in this week. But we would like to get moving on masquerading since we're up against the cloud with weather. So we do have representatives from the company. Project Turnkey is the name, so if you do have any questions with that.
Questions, do you have any questions?
Do you still intend on moving that dirt this year?
We do.
I hope so.
Yes, we still don't know whether that will allow us to do that, so time is of the essence though.
Tricky getting compaction this time of year, obviously.
Yes, there are ways. We have ways in the budget.
Lots of line.
As we go forward with masquerading and stuff, what's anticipated moving that date or, you know, desired moving date? September 15th?
Yeah, for next year, yeah. So we'd like to get the earthwork completed before the weather turns too cold so we can then begin vertical construction.
So you still intend on doing like vertical construction throughout the winter season if it's not too bad?
Absolutely, yes.
Been down before, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, everything in your packet, city engineer closes my list and our client fills through a major green. They give recommendation for preliminary site plan, you can approve them and masquerading can begin. And we're looking to see if we're going to do a special competitive issue at this month. Final engineering gets reviewed so that they can get foundation permit. This is all part of our zoning code has, this is not states currently, but our zoning code in our annexation agreement with Bridgeport was due to the fact we didn't have a preliminary engineering, it's a large master plan and there's so much flexibility, site plans, we come to planning division and city council for approval. Normally staff, once it's all approved, staff and, you know, engineers can go through it and approve the site plans. But we wanted to keep, you know, the council and the public involved as we're, you know, building out that site. And it's, there was no, the main question they had was stormwater and that was answered. You know, they're going to put it into the system of the whole project they have right now. And so there isn't enough capacity in stormwater design that's out there. And then the rail tracks will be connected to this, this will be a rail serve site with a VNSF. And the trucks that will be coming in, if there is further expansion, if you look at the site plan, there's what we're calling is the temporary entrance that they're putting in now. And then there'll be a road to the, to the east of this design, which will be the full service road that'll head down south, which will now take up more property. But at the beginning where engineers are okay and with the turnarounds for the trucks to come in and out, there won't be enough room for them to be able to do that. And then they'll build off that road when they decide to build, they'll probably south. And this, and this company is part of our economic development budget package you guys approved. They're also going to be leasing, Building B they call it, it's already been approved. They're going to be building 575,000 square foot building. And they're going to be leasing about 40% upfront. So ultimately, the jobs created here will be about 40, 50? A little job?
Yeah, that was my clip.
That's a little high.
It's okay.
Yeah, we're about 69 now, so probably add another 10 here now. And over time we'll add more as we expand out.
I think I tie these buildings in together?
Not across the road.
Eventually, is that what you're doing?
There's the capability for that.
With the Transhold facility, there's what they call a transit.
Does that, is that what we need, is we need to put everything together?
I think so. Once you get enough volume, it doesn't make sense to be shuttled between.
Questions? I'll power you with one thing, sorry. I think, one thing special, you know, it's always nice to welcome the neighbors into, into Wilmington, I'm sure you guys still watch the process, but I'd be glad to be out there when they do the down break, and then open those doors and everything else.
Well, we're very excited about the opportunity. I tell you, we're out of space, so the quicker we can build, the better. So it seems like it's going on, a lot of cold storages out there, I see that they just can't rebuild faster. In our garage, too. We've only gone into new locations, we've gone into two new locations just in the last few months.
Wow.
Temporary location.
We got places up north.
So we're excited with the ability to expand, too. That's, that's the other good thing. That was a big driver for us, is, this is just the beginning of what we're gonna build out. And the rail serves is really big for us as well, opens up a whole new business segment for us.
So something that you really haven't been into in the past?
We haven't been able to do it. We're willing to do it.
Right.
Easy exercise, I could design, I could help you out, still.
Yeah.
All right, any questions? No questions, council? We have roll call vote, please.
Absolutely. Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent. Motion passes.
All right, Planning and Zoning Commission's next scheduled meeting is Thursday, December 4th, which is this Thursday at 6 o'clock noon. All right, committee report, building grounds, parks, health, safety, Alderman Persick, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, December 10th, 2014 at 6 PM.
Water Source Streets and Alley, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Kirwin?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve pay estimate in the amount of $87,348.50 for the temporary signal at Route 53 and South Arsenal Road payable to Alson Electric Incorporated.
Motion by Alderman Kirwin, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Stuter, any discussion?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Kirwin?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent. Motion passes.
All right, Planning and Zoning Commission's next scheduled meeting is Thursday, December 4th, which is this Thursday at 6 o'clock noon. All right, committee report, building grounds, parks, health, safety, Alderman Persick, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, December 10th, 2014 at 6 PM.
Water Source Streets and Alley, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Kirwin?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve pay estimate in the amount of $87,348.50 for the temporary signal at Route 53 and South Arsenal Road payable to Alson Electric Incorporated.
Motion by Alderman Kirwin, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Stuter, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, December 16th, 2014 at 6 PM.
More than some ice, Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Stuter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, December 1st, 2014 at 6 PM.
First down, collect the parking, Alderman Larry Hall, Alderman Persick?
Nothing at this time, man.
No, thank you, did you see that?
I know, I like that.
Press it.
City administrator's report, Mr. Grab? Yeah, so we got Van Dyne giving up, he has the leaf back, it's still operating, and it's operating very efficiently. They believe they'll have another pass, with the weather warming up a little bit this, the end of this week, they'll do one more pass. Normally when the snow hits, they stop, or they melt it, so they'll, they'll be out there doing another pass out there in certain streets that people are asking, they're actually out today. Yeah, so, they're getting ready to work, they call them the Juileys for North Island Parking Lot, for the lights, all the lights are in, all the poles are in, all the electricity components are all there, so as soon as the Juileys are done, you know, we get out there and start setting the concrete foundations, and then, you know, with the poles up, the goal is to try to get the lights maybe operating within the next, you know, week or two weeks, so that it'd be, especially with the Christmas walk, and let's get that parking lot put up. Signage, plan that we have for that area, we noticed we had to order a couple more, so we'll be putting up signs, identify the visible parking lot, also we got signs being up on Route 53 to identify the business, downtown business, and additional parking, so we can start guiding people to where that parking lot actually is located. That'll be a big plus. Place facility, we're, we're done with the tile work in the locker rooms and in the bathroom, Brown's is now gonna start prepping the floors for the, what they call the composite tile, which is in the big squad room area, and that's, probably take about six to seven workdays for them to do all that, because they gotta prep, prep the floors, and then it's gonna dry, and then they gotta put the, put that tile down, and then that's, nobody can go on it for about three days for it to sit. Then they'll start putting the carpet in, hopefully about two weeks, we'll then be able to start putting some of the interior furnishings in, the desk and the cabinets and the entrance room. If I can stay on, on focus, we probably will look in somewhere after the Christmas break to where maybe we could be able to start moving, you know, records and things over, and maybe try to get that facility occupied by, you know, September, January. We are working with the contractor on a couple of still punch list items, the attorneys, John's done a great job of sending out the information to them on my notice in regards to performance and scheduling, and it seems like that's helped a lot now to get them out here to do the work that we're looking at. It'll probably be one or two open punch list items that won't be able to get done until spring, because of the siding and things like that, a couple of repairs have to be done, but it's all gonna be, you know, it's all noticed on, on the letters that will be given out, and of course, we'll be taking money until we're ready to, ready to pay out, you know, the final. We're still waiting for the certified, for any wage certificate, so they haven't paid that $600,000, that we, you guys approved probably about six weeks ago, and we're waiting for that affidavit to come in, and once we get that, then that money will get released. And our contractors, most of them now, Leo Van Dyne's ceiling, he's been paid up to about 70 percent, and our pay has been paid up to about 85 percent, and then we'll hold that back, just to make sure it's, all the paint's done properly, and then our check gets put off the records, and touch up work that our payers have to do. I think everything's moving better than it was three weeks ago.
What was the, do you know what the total cost of the painting?
$6,900, I believe it was.
$6,900, and you said 85 percent has been paid?
Yeah, we're, we got a check, check ready for him to be kept up tomorrow, for $6,000, so, because he just finished up, a lot of, well, he finished up just before Thanksgiving, and we were out there looking at it on Monday again, to make sure it looked good, so. And he was waiting for William Scott to finish those walls, and so we've, with all that to be done, but it's been, been, been done, so. And we gave Leo a punch list on a few things, we put the ceiling, nothing major, just, so they just have to be paying up. He did a real good job with the ceilings, so. And we'll get the interior people in there next, after that, Brown's got a partial payment too, I believe about 50 percent of their contract, 50, 60 percent of their contract will be done, a lot of that's the materials too.
That it? Yeah, I should go. Attorney's report, Mr. Urban?
Thank you.
All right, our next victory, city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 16th, 2014 at 7 o'clock noon. Motion, sir?
Owe it.
Second?
Second.
Mayor?
I...